Let's start.
You ready, bro?
Why are we wear sunglasses?
Cause the future of Mundeline is so bright. And on that note, welcome to another episode of Mundeline Minute. This is episode number nine. I know. Episode number nine and.
We should have a tenth episode party. I don't know what that means, but.
I have an idea. Tune in. So this is recapping the village board meeting number three thousand two hundred and thirty-two and the board meeting was last night.
Thirty-six minutes.
Was that it? Thirty-six minutes? Started at just after seven?
Seven thirty-six. So also I know this because of where I sit down by the chiefs.
Yes.
And it hasn't happened any, it doesn't hasn't happened in a while, but the chiefs used to bet on like the timing of how long it would be. And I would be like, I control how long this is gonna be. I'm gonna talk longer, just. Or just to throw them off. Yeah. But last week, last night was short, but um.
It really was a short agenda and we even had like introductions of firefighters and swearing in. And it's still just breezed right through. There wasn't, there wasn't a lot of.
Nothing controversial.
Controversial. Yeah, that's a good word. Nothing that was talked about at extreme length that could be controversial in the moment.
But, 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 but it's because we had a really good packet.
We did and, and, and Steve, uh, Mayor Lentz even mentioned that, like the information that staff gave us ahead of time. And they even gave us some information before the packet came out to kinda say, hey, this is what's coming. Yeah. Let us know what questions you have so that we can.
Even like in our board briefs or stuff that was like covered that was gonna be talked about, you know, so. Being prepared, like, you know, reading this and being prepared before the meeting with a lot of information was helpful. All of that's public information. It's all on the port, on the website. The packets are, so everything that we get, you guys can see too, but. Hopefully we'll go over some stuff now that will clear up any questions.
And before we do that.
Oh, your disclaimer.
My disclaimer. Um, and before that, my name is Eric Schwank and I'm a trustee in Mundeline and Kara. Is also a trustee and she's over here shopping for sunglasses on her phone in the middle of recording a podcast.
I thought you were gonna do.
And uh, I'll do it now while you keep doing that. So this is my house and the cameras, the microphone, the lights. Uh, everything is mine. The cats over here that have been dragging things up and down the stairs, which are right behind the camera.
So when I like look.
The bells on their, on their little snap away collar. Uh, so yeah, this is my house. There's kids upstairs and a wife. She's on Zoom call and they're doing tutoring too. Um, so there's more cats. There's a bird. And um, you know, but this is, this is life and we wanna record this podcast and keep it as, as real as possible with.
Cause we are, if we're at anything, we're definitely real.
Yes. So, so welcome to my home and uh, I'd just like to throw in that there's absolutely no taxpayer dollars.
You should make the lights flash right now.
Where's my phone?
I don't know.
It's up there.
Eric got a new toy.
Uh, so yeah, there's no, there's no taxpayer dollars in any of the uh.
This podcast to rationalize your toy purchases to your wife. I need it for the podcast.
Absolutely, I do.
We make him flat. Watch this, ready?
Hold on, it's loading.
Eric got new toys this week and he's gonna make him go in a second. Here comes his cat.
We're probably gonna have a cat walk in front of the camera or something.
Knock it over? Cats are jerks.
Surprise me. Let's see.
There's blue lights. Can you guys see that? There's red lights.
They're definitely.
It's like the police are in Eric's basement.
I like that one. And then where is?
Excuse me while I have a seizure.
The paparazzi ones. Oh, I feel so, so special here.
You should always feel special.
Thank you.
I think you're important.
So we'll just bring it back to the normal lights. That's definitely, oh my gosh, there's a cat walking above the camera. So anyways, back to the village.
I hope people listen to this and not watch it.
It's trying to climb onto the ceiling.
That doesn't exist.
That does, yeah. Okay, anyways, back to our, our actual purpose for being here, recapping the, the village board meeting. And it was a quick meeting. We did the pledge of allegiance, you know, attendance, the approval of minutes. There was no public commentary. That's the first time in a while. It was kind of odd that there, there wasn't any.
You're right, because there was a lot of people there last night, but it was all there for the firefighters.
Right, exactly. Then we brought the firefighters up ahead of some items on the agenda. G- generally we do this when there's a lot of family.
Small humans there and kids don't cooperate through.
They don't, they don't care about a presentation from um, Heartland and Starbucks and, and their plans. So we moved that up eh, to, to try to get it moving, if you will, and get them where they wanted to go. So we did the introduction of Battalion Chief Brad Sashko, uh, the introduction.
Mundeline High School graduate.
Did he really? Oh geez. The introduction of Lieutenant Brett Clark and Lieutenant uh, Gil Rubio. And so these, these gentlemen took their positions. Oh my gosh, these kids. So these, these gentlemen took their positions a couple of months back, if I'm not mistaken.
Was during COVID.
COVID, right?
So they never got, he never got like recognition, cause it was like May of last year.
Right. So now we're bringing them in front of the board to do the official swearing in and the introduction and everything else.
Do you hear the cats, guys?
I'm gonna step away and go let the cat out of the basement and maybe it'll stop.
Then we moved um. Public hearings, there wasn't any, and then we issued a meeting call for July twelfth and you can hear Eric's stairs squeaking. Um, at six thirty, it will be a committee of the whole meeting and it will be just to discuss um, green electric, gle- oh, nope. Green electric aggregation. Um, so meeting call six thirty PM, July twelfth in the boardroom.
Did you talk about uh, that we went back up to the presentation?
Oh, no I didn't. Oh, good lord. Can we just like? Okay.
I'm back. So the cats are now free to roam about the house and not meow at us. Hashtag free the cats from Eric's basement. That's too long of a hashtag. So, so we went back up to presentations and awards and um, that's when we had a presentation from Heartland. A commercial developer and uh, Mr. Grogan, who is a developer.
Yeah.
Uh, and this is for the Starbucks on Lake Street. That'll be right next to Flowerama in that shopping center, yep, in the parking lot.
Um, so during the presentation, they showed the design of the building. Um, it looks like they're newer model buildings that are like smaller footprint, more focused on drive-through business. Talked about how they're going to have to like relocate some lighting and how the, the parking lot will be signed in order to make traffic flow efficiently. Um, what else?
Starbucks uh, in their lease agreement is requiring that the developer make the, the lot where. The Starbucks will be on its own pin. So we'll, we'll have to do a, a plat of subdivision.
Yeah.
Um, for the redevelopment and so that'll come back before the board. Um, they did ask for an approval of a special use permit and a drive-through. C-five, the downtown zoning is uh, a special use permit is required. And then there was a variation required for the, the plat. So. Our municipal code says that any, any property, any plat, any, I guess, property is, is right term there. Has to front village right of way. So this new lot will not.
Set back from.
Set back in a parking lot, right. And it's cited on all sides by property that's owned by somebody else, not the village. So we granted them the variance because there's rights of easement. So there's a. A document that'll get filed with the county that says that anybody can access that lot through this other lot.
Right.
Through the easement.
Yeah.
So that's now, uh, we granted that variance. Well, we, we granted. To draft the variance for us to approve probably at the next board meeting.
Hopefully. I wanna get moving on this, right?
Right.
Let's move along.
So they said, just uh, throw in there, um, oh yeah, May of twenty twenty-two. Um, they, they plan. Before May of twenty twenty-two.
So.
Yeah.
Um, there is, I just wanna kind of, I'm trying to anticipate the questions that we're gonna get or what we're gonna see on social media of. Regarding this, so bear with me as I try to address this being psychic. There is this same model in Grayslake on one twenty. And I have driven down one twenty during rush hour with the Starbucks and I has not. To my knowledge, caused mass issues on one twenty. Traffic still flows. Um, this Starbucks in particular is going to work with I dot on some write-in, write-out type of situation. So that will help, but uh, Starbucks, and this is public knowledge, Starbucks said it last, or Heartland said it last night that I dot is super delayed in their granting of.
And this is not the first developer we've heard this from.
Yeah, we've heard that I dot is really slow, so it's helpful. So they will sign it until it's striped onto forty-five. So traffic concerns, um. There may be some in the beginning as people navigate this, but on one twenty in Grayslake, it hasn't, you know, it's not like. Any worse than it would be if the Starbucks isn't there. So that's one concern. I think, um, the other concern is what about area? Are we doing something that would hurt area? And this is a completely different market. Than what area serves.
Correct.
So this will serve at, at least in my mind, and I think this probably in your, and I heard some other trustees say the same thing.
They're not competing with area. They're competing with Dunkin'.
And that's how capitalism works. And there are Starbucks people and there are Dunkin' people and. And I'm both, like I'm an area person for sure, but if I'm. In a rush, I have to get to, woo, I have to get to work. I'm fidgeting. My mom's gonna yell at me. Sorry for fidgeting. Um, I have to get to work or whatever. Or here's a great example. Last week, I went to go make coffee. Or no, no, it was on Sunday. I went, I made coffee at home, cause I had to be somewhere at five thirty AM. Thanks, friends. And I am walking out the door and I dumped my, I just dropped it on the front stairs. And so I had to swing by a Starbucks and I, you know, I was going somewhere. I wasn't like going, it wasn't a destination to get coffee. I was getting coffee to like. Get to, I lifeguarded a triathlon, so I had to get there, right? So I, I wasn't gonna stop at area. I was gonna swing by a drive-through and be like, be quick. So like, it's just a different market. It's people that are going to work that are. Passing it along forty-five that are gonna swing in. And my hope with the Starbucks being here is that. It gives people a reason to slow down on forty-five and like look around. And.
And, and, and Steve even mentioned it last night that they're hoping that this provides somewhat of an anchor to fill other spots. Um, in that, that shopping center that has sat bacon.
Because like, for example, if you're cruising down forty-five and you didn't live in Mundeline, do you know that Surf's Up is back there? And it's good, I mean.
Or area coffee.
Right.
Or any of the other places.
Right, like so, or like, do you know that, that maybe you see Flowerama, cause it's on the corner, but whatever, like. You, you don't know that Surf's Up is there. And so maybe now you take note of what's in that plaza. Um, or you know, we know that there's a place that's gonna go in there that's gonna be a. Restaurant slash whiskey tasting. I'm probably getting that wrong, but I don't drink, so like, I have no idea, but. That's gonna go in there. So like, maybe this will draw more attention to that, that shopping center as a whole. So.
Right. I wanna talk one thing about traffic.
Oh yeah, go on.
The, the drive-through is made to stack ten cars. So from where you enter. To the speaker box, I think was like two cars and it's another eight cars um, through the drive-through lane. And then they're gonna assign uh, for cars to, to go through the parking lot, so it doesn't back up onto forty-five or even Holly Street.
Right. So they're doing they, what they can to mitigate this, the traffic situation. Bless you.
Excuse me.
Sneezes is a whole nother.
Sneezing to a, a podcast microphone.
That is loud. Um, so I think this is good, right? It generates more potential jobs in the area. It generates more interest in the area. It gives people a reason to slow down on forty-five. I mean, this is a good thing. We want this coming. And quite frankly, like, the demand is there because. I don't know about you, but if you've tried to go to Starbucks on a, I forgot what day it was, on a Saturday. Russ was like out and he was gonna swing by and get me coffee because. No, we had gone to area and Theo wanted to go home and we had rode our bikes. And so I drank like three sips of my coffee before I was like. Alright, that's gotta go. So.
Right.
But the car, the wait in line at the Starbucks by Target was like fifteen cars deep. So like, the demand is.
That one has a crazy line all the time.
So busy, so busy. Anyways. If there's questions about this or there's concerns, like.
Please.
Email me.
Reach out.
Call me.
Absolutely.
Text me, message me on Facebook, you know, reach out, cause I will answer them or try my best.
Cool. Cool.
Ready, move on.
Alright, so then we went back to the mayor's report. Uh, there was a meeting call for the committee of the whole meeting regarding green electric aggregation bids. So that will be July twelfth at six thirty PM. It will be, will it be lit? It's a lighting, it's all about electricity. Alright, I'll move on.
Eric tries so hard to be cool.
That's my dad jokes. Every podcast has to have one, I think. Alright, so next up was a Class B liquor license.
Follow me everywhere I go.
Yep.
Thanks, honey.
Uh, so we granted a liquor license for La Rosita supermarket.
Not a new liquor license?
Not a liquor license. It's a change.
Yeah, but because of how we, we've talked about this before, how we issue liquor licenses. Um, it is a new owner. So new owner over at La Rosita. It's not La Salsa anymore. It's new owner. So. Check him out. We met him after the board meeting. Were you with me? I don't know.
Just for a few minutes, yeah.
Yeah, super nice guy. So excited, like young entrepreneur, exactly what we would wanna attract here.
Absolutely. Uh, next up was negotiating team appointments. So we. Already had negotiating team members for Carriage Crossing. This is the Senior Living and Memory Center uh, in your neck of the woods over there.
Yep.
And they started and uh, took down the trees and then stopped in the pandemic.
Crazy global pandemic.
Right, and then now.
Saw that coming.
Now they're back to it and we need to have some negotiating team members.
Yeah.
Uh, and the two members that were on it are no longer on the board. So we appointed uh, trustees Ross and, and Wilson.
But I feel like this might be a good thing that we're appointing to go, like maybe it's gonna start again. Maybe, maybe the, maybe the industry is like slowly rebounding, which is good, you know?
Yep. Yep. So next up was trustee reports, community and economic development. So we took steps to start. A dormant special service area, an SSA for Sheldon Woods. And this is a long process. Uh, this will be back before us many times before it's done.
And hopefully something that will never get utilized.
Absolutely. So this is something that if the homeowners association uh, goes belly up and, and fails. Then the SSA can be activated to help cover some of those costs in the future. Things that the, the homeowners association should be taking care of.
Correct. But hopefully we never see it.
Exactly. And then Starbucks was, was on the agenda. Um, so we had the presentation that we just talked about. This was just a motion to have staff start drafting the, the variances and the.
And this did get seen by planning and zoning.
Yes. Unanimous.
Unanimously through planning and zoning, but they saw it. Um, and it was in the packet, their findings, their questions. Like I said, I felt like this packet was really comprehensive.
It was.
Yeah, so.
There was a lot to it, but it was really well done and everything was right there where you needed it.
Uh, the mayor has, prints his out and it was like a phone book.
Right.
So I do not print mine out.
I do not either. I use a.
It on the laptop and.
Yeah.
You know, anything.
You use the village laptop?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know you're fancy and have a Mac.
I use, I use an iPad and the Apple pencil, so I can highlight and write on it.
Yeah, I try to, I'm just not, I am like old school and I still read and take notes. I've tried to like go to the stylus and I, it's just, it's not my learning style.
During the meeting, I have to have my paper agenda though.
Oh, really?
I've tried doing electronic, but it just doesn't work.
I just take notes on my notebook if I have anything that comes up that raises red flags me. Um, but I try not to like. Unless it's public commentary, everything else I feel like I'm fairly prepared for.
Yeah.
Um, you know, and then as, at, sometimes random questions come to my head, but I always usually, usually just ask him.
Sure.
Anyways.
Alright, so that was it for community and economic development. Next was Public Works, uh, which had no report. Finance Committee was next. That was me. And uh.
Just paying bills.
The governing body bill approval, right? Fancy term for paying bills. Uh, two point two million dollars. It, it was a little bit higher than normal. Um, there was some, some larger expenses for healthcare. There was roads resurfacing that was in there. Yeah, so it was like three weeks instead of two. It was like seven hundred and twenty thousand for um, road resurfacing. There was uh, an. About two hundred and thirty for the ERP system that we've talked about. So there was some, some larger costs that, that came in. Plus we had an extra week in between the board meetings. So that kinda launched into.
I know, I was so confused last week. I was like, wait, I don't, wait, what? I don't have a board meeting?
Right.
Cause it's so hard, like I always set up a reminder in my phone, but it's hard because it's not bi-weekly.
Not every time.
Right? So like my phone's like, you have a meeting. I'm like, oh, wait, do it. Nope, good. Okay. Get my life together.
Alright, so next up was public safety. Go.
Why did you breathe like? Um, so this criminal code ordinance, we were mandating an ordinance. There was a word that was different. It's literally one word, I think.
Yeah, the word no.
Correct.
Was missing?
Yes.
Yes.
So we added the word.
No.
Can we get a clip of you saying?
No.
To this ordinance. Um.
It's my favorite parent word. No.
I can't stop laughing when you say it like that.
No.
Okay. So, but this goes to show you that even things that are like minor, such as the word.
No.
Are taken before the board. Alright, I'm done now.
We didn't even rehearse this. It worked out well.
So funny. Who thinks we're funny? Only us.
Only us.
It's okay. Um, the second one was a part-time fire inspector, so we're gonna add a part-time position to the building department to hire a. Part-time fire inspector. This is a cost savings initiative, so that the fire department hat, doesn't have to do this.
And it's also a huge life safety issue. Uh, because we have not been able to complete all of our annual fire inspections for like the past five years. So now we're hiring a part-time inspector, so that we can do every inspection that we set out to do every year.
Yeah. This one might be a little, this one sounds like it's super controversial, but I don't, but let's get to the meat of it and hopefully this placates some worries.
Oh boy.
It's a good word, right?
Placates?
Is that the right use of it?
No. Yes, it was. Oh yeah, you dropped an S-bomb again.
Darn it, rats. Okay, no one heard it. We're gonna edit it out. Just kidding, we don't edit this thing at all. Eric just likes to do whatever he can to make me. Sound ridiculous. It's not hard. Um, this was authorize staff to draft an ordinance establishing and implementing a program to charge. Rates for the deployment of emergency and non-emergency services. Cats are back. What's up dudes? Um, so we have talked about this for a long time. In fact, our very first meeting with the fire department. When we got elected.
We kinda did like a.
We talked about this.
Around robin with through all of our department heads to kinda learn what we could.
Um, yeah. Yeah, I mean, yeah, and we learned about this.
And we learned about this. This was something that's been, been on the agenda for them, in the works for, for the past two years.
Yeah, probably. So what does this mean? What does this mean? Let's go down to the meat and potatoes of it. This means that. If you get into an accident or whatever, maybe that's a bad example, but if you need fire.
It's actually a, a great example. If, if you get in a car accident.
Yeah, and you need fire services and they come out and they clean up glass and they.
Use the jaws of life to extract you?
Correct. Prior to this, we were not billing insurance for that. Correct.
Correct.
Okay. This will, go ahead.
We would bill for the medical services.
EMS portion of it.
The EMS and the transporting to the hospital, that would be billed to your insurance provider.
Right.
And if you do not live in the village of Mundeline, then we would balance bill you.
Correct. If you are not a resident here.
Right.
Okay. So we got that. Now, this will allow us to bill insurance for the. Fire services that, non-EMS services that are utilized.
Correct.
And if you are not a resident, not a resident, we will balance bill you. Correct.
I believe so.
Okay. So that's what this means. So this is allowing us to do what. Many, 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 many other municipalities do.
Correct.
And we haven't been doing.
And we're, we're estimating based on call volume from twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. Um, not looking at twenty twenty because.
An anomaly, it's an outlier.
Yeah, COVID definitely dragged down the number of, of people on the road, number of accidents, you know, the number of, of calls to, to EMS were, were down. So they didn't look at that data, but based on twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen's data, um, staff is record, staff is. Expecting roughly eighty thousand dollars a year from this billing.
Correct, which will allow us to, if needed. Give raises to firefighters.
Well, and some of that is already contracted amounts of money that, that we've said we're going to pay our firefighters X amount for the next so many years. Uh, you know, whatever the, the, the CBA, the contract states. Or we just spend a lot of money to resurface the, the fire station floor in the, in the bay. Or we had the um, the alerting system that had to be redone. These are, these are costs that is part of running a fire department. Part of running a government. And we have sources of revenue, you know, of course, property taxes and sales taxes being. The, the, the big one there. But any source of revenue can help offset other increases in revenue in other departments.
Yeah.
Uh, or in other areas, I should say. So this is eighty thousand dollars that can go into the village's general fund. To help offset future expenses, future costs as costs will always continue to rise. It is very rare.
Yeah.
In business and. Right, when costs goes, when costs go down.
Yeah. So this is. Basically charging for a service that's being utilized.
Yes, not to our residents.
Not to our residents who pay taxes here.
Right.
We get it. We understand.
We're billing the insurance company for the work that our.
Fire departments.
First responders are, are doing.
Okay.
That, I also wanna throw in there, there's allotted amounts for each item that the fire department is doing.
Yeah, it's almost like, um, I'm, I'm about to get. So like in hospital billing, you have an ICD-nine code or an ICD-ten code. And that is like how insurance is billed. And it's the same thing for this.
Right. If they use the jaws of life, this code applies.
This code applies. So it's not like we're like, hey, we can charge him one zillion dollars. It's not that. There's standards.
Correct.
Questions? Concerns?
Email address. I'll put it up on the screen.
Right here. You got it?
No. Wait, you pointed it. Yes, I have it.
No, but I know, I just like the no. No. I'm, we're gonna try, I'm trying to do that in a meeting. See if we can do that.
Okay. No.
Just makes me laugh. So that's it. Um, neither chief had reports. Um, however, I know that the fire department, this is ancillary and I don't know if anyone cares, but I'm just letting you know that. Um, the fire department sent, um. Uh, what am I trying to say? Firefighters to Rockton. Uh, they left last night at ten o'clock at night, I think. Or they staged and they left at eleven. I can't remember. Um, out to Rockton to help with that chemical explosion out there and um. Lake County did and Cook County, Cook County did, so. That's a mess.
Yeah.
So, but our, our guys are out there helping to the best of their ability as well. So there's my update.
Alright.
Building committee, no report, no motions. Transportation infrastructure, um, this was just to authorize us to paint the water towers. And when, I feel like this description of painting the water towers is like unjust, because people think we're just like painting them, just to paint them. You paint them to maintain them. I mean, Adam had to explain this to us too, because we were like, why are we just painting them? Can't we just save the money?
We had quite a discussion. This, this time, it, it just, the motion just passed.
Because we knew.
We literally had this conversation less than a year ago.
Yeah.
When one of the other water towers was painted and, and we went through the, the cost of painting a water tower. We talked about. How often the water tower is painted, every twenty years. And that, when was the last time we painted ours? Twenty-six?
Yeah.
And you know.
But it's not just painting it. It's like part to maintain it too, so that it stays.
It's not rusting away.
Correct. And it doesn't look bad, but also so it functions correctly.
Correct.
So it's not all just vanity sake, like we have to have the new logo on the water tower. It's to maintain the integrity of the structure.
And, and to that point, we've had this logo for several years now. And we didn't rush up the water towers to, to. Whitewash it and change the logo. This was, this was just, we left it up there and now we're redoing. The, the water towers and one at a time and painting them as needed.
Right.
And changing out that logo, um, and making sure that the colors are correct.
The colors are correct, right?
The colors are correct.
And you. And you got that change that they are correct?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
I don't know what I had to do with that, but yeah.
We were just gonna say that he did. Okay, other reports, nothing. Can we just talk about the first thing? Get your, get your lights ready.
No, I'm not. No, come on.
Come on!
Oh, you want.
Come on! Alright, ready? Are you ready?
No, it's gonna take me a minute. That's.
But the suspense is like building. Build a suspense, build a suspense.
Nobody watches this. They listen to it when they're working out, bro.
Get that deadlift, bro. Um, just kidding. So my husband listens to this at the gym. That's why I'm making fun of him. Oh, I can't play with my necklace. My mom will yell at me. Okay, the omnibus, first omnibus, um, motion was. To approve the purchase order for fireworks. Oh wait, they're not going off.
Oh, there I put color on.
Oh, you can't really see because it's darn it, we should have turned the lights off. No, you can't see them. Okay, Eric's lights make fireworks things. Aw, man, this is gonna be so funny. And then he ruined it.
How did I ruin it?
Just ruined my life. Um so yes, fireworks for, whoo, you can control the lights from your phone. Look at, alright, are the fireworks going off? There's the fireworks. Okay, I'm so pumped for Community Days. I cannot wait.
I know. I am excited about it.
I fireworks, okay, so my son is four and we saw fireworks twenty nineteen at um Christmas, uh the tree lighting.
Oh, yeah.
And he was so scared of them, but I feel like this year he's gonna like them and it'll give us an excuse to stay up past bedtime. I'm ex, I'm so excited.
Yours or his?
Both. Um and then the other two were um for Public Works. One of them was for phosphorus, liquid phosphorus and which is used in the water treatment. And then uh you wanna talk about sludge removal?
More more treatment.
Water, Public Works.
Yeah, this is uh getting rid of the leftovers from the the wastewater treatment facility.
From the poopy pipes.
And and it's just our nice term for. Sludge, yeah.
So yeah, that was it. No reports from uh village administrator, the attorney, the clerk, no executive session.
That was awesome. Thirty six minutes.
However, I will say I'm a little bit disappointed because I wasn't sure if I would get home and the kids would be asleep. Because I was like, I'm not. They better be asleep, but they were.
Yeah.
The bonuses of having babies. They're asleep by the time you get home. So is it?
That's it.
What else you got? Anything coming up this weekend? What is this weekend? It's Father's Day, don't forget. Yep, send it out. Uh I'm trying to think about events this weekend. I don't think there's much going on.
I'm not aware of.
I'm not aware of anything. Uh yeah.
We'll be back next week. I have an idea.
Episode.
Episode.
We're gonna turn the lights off, all the the whole lights off in the basement. It's gonna be fireworks playing the whole time.
That would look really awkward.
Can we get treats?
Treats?
I don't know why. Maybe I'll, maybe I'll bring treats for your kids for allowing us to do this nonsense here.
Sounds good.
Okay. Alright, guys.
We'll see you next week. Have a great week. Yeah, enjoy. It's supposed to be hot later this week.
Happy Father's Day.
Lovely. Thank you.
So, alright. Bye, guys.